But everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance. Call me in order, go call.
Okay, Mayor, let's get this over with.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom. Please.
Yes.
Doctor Walton will be absent on vacation.
Looking at public form. Let me tell them that motion to approve.
So.
Yeah.
Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Water.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
One second. This I had written in the bill last, but it deals with this thing. It ends up being a big amount of money. But largely what this amounts to is it's a building error through NMPP Energy. They, we get credits for, I'll get started this way. NMPP Energy does all of our transmission buildings for my service. Okay, and there's a series of charges in. Over the past several months, they've been receiving substantially more credits than we were supposed to. And that's just an error. And then over the course of the months, then it adds up to do this $33,000, $33 adjustment. And that's the amount of additional credits that we have received over the course of months. When we erroneously received, shouldn't have received that much. So what it did is, well, got together with Carol from NMPP Energy. She explained this and then had Marlon Urbis study those numbers also. And Marlon has responded then and does agree that the error is true and correct. And we're all in this one. And anyway, I would, we should approve this bill, which if we can, it was on the list that I had had to sign with. Consider that as approval. That we go ahead and pay this, we'll be square. I want to give this take care of. Then this current fiscal year, I want to show the revenue.
So is this from way back from all this whole year?
I thought from.
Prior to that?
From February on.
Right.
What's what happened? Do they have any explorations?
There's two communities. And sure as heck sounds likely if there only one other member was impacted in the error occurred when our was our our lost component was erroneously switched with the other purpose. And what happened was this had gone on for several months and gone unchecked. And then NMPP is demonstrating some software that would take away any of the manual calculations on the bills. And that's their demo and the software, actually the software that found this error.
So.
Take care.
What, so they would give us a year to pay that back or?
They'd work with us on pay, but.
So considering the additional.
Everybody's cool with that.
So are they, my other question is that have they have a stop that this won't happen again? And the check system in there?
Yes, it's additional software. Yep, they have put that in place.
It's officially, it's in the schedule here.
All right.
You have three building permits, all signed and approved?
Yeah, they are. That John Snyder one is approved. They're on your team.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Go call.
Reese.
Yes.
Water.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Voca, the public hearing on the proposed amendments of the budget.
Can I ask one question about this, just as I understand, I'm all in favor of it.
Sure.
Exactly how is this going to sit that down?
Show on this page, so it's on 41. And I'll just tell you that the lumberyard property is down there. It's the extension of Sixth Street. And there's that building that they might, okay, Carson goes, called the old man, they go, but it's that old north building there with the docks that you can drive up docks to. Okay, and it's directly north of that building.
Directly north of the lumberyard?
Of the furthest north building of the lumberyard, Thomas.
Right, straight on. So it's right along with the abandoned.
It is on the abandoned, right.
We have any info on the budget? Close the public hearing on the proposed amendments. Resolution 2125. Motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Water.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to get an inside look at Evapco's expansion, right?
Yep.
Want to lead him through it?
Yep, you bet. We come up here, right?
Go, you bet.
I apologize for the dress. Like I said, I'm trying to be three places at once today. Eleven-year-old softball practice to the Loring Hospital golf outing and to the city council meeting, so. Real quick, I guess, to get you updated, the last time I was here, we talked about the housing and development. Time previous to that was when this project first started to kick off for Evapco. So a little bit of background, some of this you all know, some of it you don't. But right now, we're staffed at about 196 people at the Evapco location in Old Lakeview. We have another 30 staff that's up in Medford, Minnesota, which are sales and engineering staff. So the factory's running on just about 230 people. Last year, we purchased, and that's what I was here for, matter of fact, was the 37 acres of farm ground that we bought west of the plant. The schedule at that point in time was maybe two, three, four, five years down the road that we would be looking at advancing and growing the operation. Our president and CEO, Mr. Barley, wanted to pursue the project and with more vigor, starting here in 2021. So we started to do some of those things. Excuse me, too many yelling at 11-year-olds. I apologize. Anyway, you know, the project got going and we started to receive some bids. And the reality is, is post-pandemic pricing was highly inflated. It had exceeded what we thought it would be. And so we kind of had to pivot. Scott and I have talked on numerous times. Scott came out. We also spoke with RFM Global, some of the requirements that we have to have, which you guys are going to talk about here a little bit. But the reality is, the pricing came in about 66% higher than we anticipated. We could attribute at least 30% of that due to post-pandemic inflation. But the rest of the project, it's really a project starting in virgin soil. And so it just cost more than we really thought it would be. The project plans are this. We are planning on putting a full-service driveway, which is going to run south of the current parking lot, still on the property, north of the housing district that is south of us. So we're going to be able to run our truck traffic into there. The plant is scheduled to be built at about 60,000 square foot of production space, which in our numbers for production is going to be three 100-foot wide bays by 200-foot long. To put that in perspective, right now, the current bay size is 50-foot. So it's a, it's a big, big plant with a lot of wide open space. The need for this plant is for a few reasons. Number one, our market share continues to grow. Number two, our product sizing is continuing to grow. This year, in the spring, we built eight units for a customer that the units were 26-foot wide by 53-foot long and moved about 120,000 CFM of air. We're looking at bringing the only product, we'll be the only manufacturer to bring product line to the market that has the capabilities of 200,000 CFM of air movement from a make-up air unit. So we're going to be venturing into a brand-new territory and this plant is going to be able to do that for us. So it's going to be big, it's going to be wide, and then it's going to have full drive-through abilities. So our truck traffic will come in the south, drive right through the middle of the parking lot, into our factory. We will load it. The ton, the cranes are going to be 20-ton cranes, so it's twice the size of the cranes we currently have. So we can pick unit sections up to 40,000 pounds. We have unit sections right now pushing 33,000 pounds. And then the truck traffic will run straight out of the north and then back through the old plant and out the gate and back onto the highway. So this will be a nice round figure of truck traffic. It is also going to encompass almost 5,000 square foot of office and future office space, which includes full-scale break room and storm shelter capabilities because we are pushing our limits now. And then two women's, two men's restrooms for the future growth. As Scott mentioned in the meeting minutes, we're proposing high-quality jobs. And we filled out that paperwork with Scott present last week and the state of Iowa as well. And so the last portion we have to make this project reality is tomorrow morning, we're going to pick a general contractor. We've had some milestone moments given to us by general contractors that could be as soon as July. Dirt will be moving. Concrete would be pouring between August and September. And then based on the need of steel, that's really the holdup, is the steel for the building probably will not ride between January and February. So you'd be looking at the actual erection of the new facility in the early, early spring, late winter of 2022. So it's a big project. We're excited. It's a good thing I don't have much hair left already because I won't have any at the end of it. But we're really excited and we need the city's support. And so on my ending note here is that we did realize with the help of the same architect and our insurance provider that the size and sheer, the sheer size of this manufacturing plant will require an awful amount of water flow and pressure and volume in order for us to provide the safest work environment for our staff. And so that's what's on your resolution and that support will push us over the edge to be able to do it. We have put a lot of capital commitment into the project and I know the city, from what we've heard so far, seems to be in support of the project. But we're looking at continuing our growth together and since we started 20 years ago. And that's what we hope to continue doing, so.
How many have you got to employ now?
Well, I'm sorry.
How many will you employ now?
We employ right around 200 right now. You know, we'd be looking at within, it could be very aggressive within the next five to 10 years that, you know, 200 to 300 people. Conservative figures could be maybe two and a half, but we're looking to continue growing and we hope that this market that nobody else is in is going to propel us to get to where we want our quality jobs.
So you're saying 200 additional?
No, about between 50 and 100 additional in the next five to 10 years.
Got it.
Yep.
We're excited to have you.
Exactly.
Brandy, I wonder, is there anything you'd like to share of your, sorry, the side number?
I just wanted to thank the city for all your work on this. And everybody is as supportive as you guys are. And I understand that water is going to be substantial of a thing, so thanks for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you for all your work.
So we're going to have really one main action item tonight, but a couple steps to get there. In your packet on page seven, there's a development agreement, a movement for this development agreement last Thursday. And really agree in principle on everything. There's a couple things that I know they were looking at as far as figuring some stuff out yet about sizing electric. And then we were also looking at some stuff on timing of water, of water supply. So I want to go through a couple of things with you and let's just start on page seven and really just the bottom of the page here. The incentive to Evapco would really be two things. And the first thing, the financial incentive is tax abatement. And we had talked about maybe having a cash incentive equal to the amount of the abatement. And Evapco was very content with this abatement schedule that we were given. So this would be just a tax abatement. And that schedule is a little bit more aggressive than our standard schedule. But that's, that's the schedule that's in our economic development policy. Okay, the second thing deals with tax increment financing, that the parcel where the plant will be constructed will be put into a TIP district and we begin receiving the TIP taxes off that. The Evapco was real good about getting us a new legal description of just the property that's being developed. So the whole 36 acres doesn't go into a TIP district and potentially starts the clock running on TIPS that way, just as one parcel does. That would be where the new plant sits.
So we have separated that right, the older one?
May I advance off that quick, just because that's something you and I have been working on. But strategically, the way we've laid out this newest plant expansion, this gives us the ability to basically do a fourplex all off of the same center point of the northwest corner. And so yes, the TIP district, we've separated out, so it's just the plant. So if we would, you know, go into the other three expansions, we'd have that ability.
Fair enough. Very true. Very true. So with that TIP and what we would be utilizing, the TIP funds primarily to paintwork would be this water extension. So when we get down to it, the council will make a commitment on this grant that says our match to the grant is two-fold, this is tax abatement. And that we would put in this water. So on top of page eight, that describes a little bit about this water system, 12-inch water main that runs from the water tower out to the Evapco site. Does a little bit of clearing up about a unique arrangement that we have out there with the Evapco now, about a current 10-inch water main on the property that's, since the, since the building has been there, it's always been defined as Evapco's private service line, which is 10-inch. But we're going to end up connecting into that 10-inch and creating a big loop in the sense of being the big loop that goes all the way around the lake. So we, Evapco will give us, give us back that 10-inch water main, become the public main again and the east municipal board. Okay, one of, one of the things that we needed to discuss about that and was, was the timing about when we would be able to do the water main. And when you look at this agreement, it says we do water main in spring and summer. And as we discussed, spring and summer of next year. And as we discussed, this is going to be too late for the way the project's going. So we're talking with Bobby and Stroba about timing on that. And we certainly can, can potentially look at doing two projects. One smaller project out there in Evapco to get a water main out underneath the, underneath the concrete and make sure that all of our work is done out there so we're not inhibiting their ability to work. So we may do a little project there and then have a larger project for the main all the way up the highway. Or you look at bidding, bidding it all together with two different completion dates because they need that main installed underneath the concrete. So we will continue to work through that to know for sure that at least we'll have the main installed underneath the concrete and have that done here quickly. And then continue to explore our alternatives on actually getting the water main out there. Because they need the water main by the time the building is being built, but that's next spring. So we have a little bit more time on that. And that helps with contractors and also on pipe pricing right now, which is kind of offset. So yeah, we'll keep working on that. And also the notion about what it says about electricity there, 460 volt, 1200 amp, I think that's going to change substantially. But I don't remember what those numbers were other than it was 3,000 amps they were talking about.
Yeah, I hadn't looked that close at it. Jared was on vacation over the weekend. He wasn't back till tomorrow, our EGR engineer. So I'd like to call him and talk to him tomorrow. I've got, I've got whatever John has gave Scott and I, so.
Yep.
So I want to talk to Jared about that. We're two of our loads, so. When I talked to Jared, he went on vacation last week. He felt pretty confident as far as the substation stuff. He was very comfortable with what we're at there. But he wanted to talk about a couple of different transformers that we probably had in the area.
He talked a little bit about electric needs and testing the units and how you would go about doing that. That seems to be one instance where we got to be able to provide massive amounts of power for this to happen.
Yeah, that's correct. And so, you know, I mean, I know that the original transformer was never thought that we would ever exceed its capacities. And on regular runtime or not, but with the 200 CFM, 300,000 CFM units, I mean, we're potentially going to be loading 100 to 150 horse large motors at the same time. And so that's what we need the after on to be able to do that.
Because you're currently running a fourth of what that transformer can use.
Right.
That's what he told me to talk to him the other day. I would like to talk to him.
Yeah, and I got John on vacation this week too.
Yeah, I know. I talked to John.
Did you?
Yeah, and he said if I had any questions, I could call him and talk to Dave. No, Ray.
Randy.
Yeah, there's, we were, so you could say second transformer, but second plan, second. No. Initial proposal is same size, but we, and we're building vertical. Just for the council reference, if you look at page 10, that's, that's the new legal description of that property. So there's 36 acres there, but the only portions that's included in the TIP is, is the shaded area there and that's the new legal description for it. And then look at page 11. That's the the overall diagram about what we propose to do for that water. Again, cost on that's about $460,000. $568,000 is the cost of that water main out to Evapco. If you wanted to point out. It's $568,000. The other thing to point out to you is, is on page 12. That's a unique situation here where Evapco working with us on the tax abatement, but that also means that they have abated taxes during, during the first five years, so the amount of TIP revenues that we receive on that goes down too. Okay, so we issue less debt, but we have to work some changes to the debt repayment schedule. So we would not repay as much debt in those first five years and then loads a little heavier and under-saturated. We will continue to work with our bond counsel on those options there and just know that this certainly can continue to work. The action item for the night is a resolution, it's on page 13. That's a resolution of support for Evapco's application to the state grant program. So it's a high-quality, high-quality job grant program. And they're entitled to a couple of wholesale tax refunding and some income tax credits through that, through that program. This makes the commitment from the city about that tax abatement schedule and the water. So this would be the one, the one action that makes a formal commitment on the city's part. On that development agreement that we were discussing, we would anticipate that we'll have everything lined up in two weeks to get those formally approved in with Evapco and city.
Motion to approve, motion 2126.
So.
Second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Water.
Yes.
Tom. Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You bet, thanks.
Okay, well, we're on to Jacobson's table. Motion 2127.
Yes, just to, when this development agreement starts on page 15, it really follows the same format that the Evapco one does. So we would propose really the same thing. This talks about that tax income financing. And in this case, it does have Jacobson receiving the equivalent of that tax abatement as an upfront incentive, which we figured would be about $66,000. So Dave Knopf has signed this and he was very much ready to go. You see, they've already started on their project, made significant progress on the, on concrete already. So we would be prepared to approve that agreement.
Motion to approve that.
Go make it.
Second.
Second.
Go call. Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Water.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
We want to talk about water system.
Is everybody get their, their report that was attached intact? So this is final report then from these two came about, about the pressure system up there. And really no proposed changes from what we have gone through a couple different times.
Does the school indicated, because I know they need provisions in their plan to kind of take care of the water because they knew it was an issue.
Right, yeah.
So is this fairly vital to them right now to have this?
It is a big benefit to their continued operation of the school. This doesn't affect the fire protection, but the pressure at the school will be looked at.
You told us one question earlier.
Sure. On page seven of the letter, there's a little recap of just a, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 recap about what the project would be. And then the estimated cost after that on page eight. So this was looking at $470,000 for this pressure system. And that's, you know, we write the same, same number that we had discussed previously. The new part of this report deals with alternatives for looping water mains. I want to actually flip what would be the very, very last page of this thing. There's three segments of water main that, that they have analyzed. And the first one here is one we consider to be very important, is to replace that, that water main on the north side of the highway. There's an existing two-inch main there that basically runs from the old work seat building along the highway all the way out to Danny Blessing's house. And they would propose that that would be replaced with a six-inch main and can really address problems that we've had up there because the condition of the main is really poor. But as we're thinking about looping alternatives, so you don't have, have that in line, so they're asking for some alternatives to, to really improve, improve. This one over here, they're on the west side of school, is, is the other main option that we'd really like to take a look at. And then that comes down the, the west side of the school there and would make a connection with an existing water main right around Bill Reddick's house. Okay, so that just makes a, a big loop all around the school and can address some flow issues there. The third one that they have given as an alternative is this orange, the dotted orange one. The idea there is that the water main that runs past front of the school is a four-inch water main and would be real undersized for fire protection needs up there. Matter of fact, now the DNR would not allow you to connect fire hydrants to anything less than six-inch. Now it's pre-existing, it's just, it's the way it is and it's allowed, certainly allowed to exist that way. But we had them prepare some analysis on these three water mains. So if we flip backwards, you can get to page nine, so the page number is in the upper left-hand corner. So yeah, page, page is fine, page nine. So this will have the cost estimate for the replacement of the water main on Highway 175. So a cost estimate on replacing that water main on Highway 175 is $245,35. The other one that we really would give strong consideration to is what they call the west main. And that's the one that's down the west side of the school property. And that's itemized there on page 10 with the cost being $117,506. The third alternative is that one up Fifth Street and up Jackson, which can really have some positive effect on, on fire protection. But you can see that there, that involves quite a lot of more work in, actually in the residential area and through the streets. Cost of that one's 37,155. I'm interested in your thoughts about potentially potential projects for water main.
Well, we about have to do the booster station, right? Is that that way, isn't it? The total project's eight thirty-three, but that doesn't include the three thirty-seven?
Yeah, total is eight thirty-three and that does not include the Jackson street. I think I'd just throw this out there for your consideration now. Do you have a little bit of analysis about how we would fund it? It's the pressure station, we would do that with the tip fund. We finance that with the tip funds and as joint tip funds with the Dapco, but from the Jacobson project and also plus all of the other great economic development projects primarily that are perennial. I have lots of good value for it. So we can make that work.
This pump station's gonna need three-phase power. So that cost doesn't cover any of that additional getting that power to that. Cause you're looking at probably sticking a transformer right next to the water.
Right next to what?
Right next to the pump.
We're gonna, we're looking at Fifth and Madison, right?
Yeah, I have no, I mean, you're gonna be bringing power from the middle of between Seventh and Sixth, that Jackson. Coming from that section, right, is the closest three-phase. You'd have to come down south from Jackson to Fifth, wherever you're gonna set this pump station. Then you have a transformer sitting there, so there'll be some concern with some homeowners probably over having this three-phase transformer sitting in the front yard.
Well, because the pump station's gonna.
That'll be underground probably.
Well, that's, some of it's gonna be.
It has a control panel.
But it looks like a fairly good slab and maybe look at that a few weeks ago.
Yeah, maybe it'll look like a A-type, yeah, A-type concrete slab.
You're saying that the three-phase that you have is up between Sixth and Seventh on Jackson?
Yes, it's right in the alley, right next to Dave Nelson's property.
What kind of a job is that to bring that down then to Fifth and Madison?
You don't have to have boring crew for that, which we got other projects that we're gonna have to have come in anyway. But it's an additional cost is what I'm saying.
Exactly, which should be figured in. I mean, cause you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do an internal loan there.
Not for that, no. You know, what we would do when, as we get towards the end of the projects and we're ready to do the water main work, we would have one big debt issuance through banks.
To tie all the projects together?
To tie all the projects together in one day. So like when we would do the incentive payment for Jacobson, that smaller amount would be an internal loan. And we would be able to finance it through tip, be an internal loan to have the funds and then we start to recruit those funds.
So during the initial Dapco project to get that water main underneath that building area?
We could do that as an internal loan for smaller projects.
So how long, how long do you borrow, is not important to put it all together?
If there's twenty-year repayment, through the tip, it's twenty.
And that's what we would do to the bank, would be the same twenty years and use tip payment from the properties to recover this?
Yes.
You know, I realize you are with the Dapco, is the tip revenue you're gonna get of all one seventy-five, is that gonna pay for this?
Yeah, just you think of everything in one big picture. So that with all of the economic development projects generates tip to pay debt service on the water main and pump station.
So it would be one big loan. We do a couple of internal loans and then those internal loans.
They get rolled into a big one.
But obviously, we kind of need to know the cost for the transfer.
Yeah.
And how big is that transformer?
Eight.
Huh? I know, we had, which ones are the three-phase?
I'll have to ask Jeff. Hey Jeff? How big is this three-phase transformer that's there? Where is the three-transformer?
Where do you have one at?
Um, the closest one, right here behind Park State Bank, three-phase transformer here. But it doesn't really matter on KVA for the most part unless you got a two thousand, like they got out there, which is a very big unit. Most of the rest of them are fairly similar in size, so.
So when you're talking Fifth Street on Madison, we would have something like what is behind Park State Bank?
Correct.
Plus, we're gonna have that slab or the.
Correct.
Pump station.
And your control panel might stop there.
So you gotta get a cost estimate on that?
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is keep working with the engineers on, well, I guess I'm more thinking about Dapco on timing on that. Cause timing on this one is nearly as important.
Right.
It doesn't have to happen right away.
Right, no.
But yeah, we can put a rough cost together on that transformer cost and then it would be the boring cost.
So we can go ahead and move on to Dapco's, put an internal loan.
We can, yes.
Okay, we got the environmental study we need to do on outlet twenty.
Yeah, so we did, working through this firm called Environment Research Services and this is out of Ainge, that they had given this proposal then to do phase one and phase two studies on outlet twenty, which is the north half of the Mary St. Joseph. Actually got a one call today about having them come in and do the boring, which we stated for Wednesday. So they will be here to.
So I see they're gonna go down like ten, twenty feet.
Yes.
And the project that we're looking at would only be these slabs, whatever project we use of. But they go that deep anyway, and then what happens if it's deemed, what do you call that?
Oh, like brownfield site, that there'd be a mitigation strategy developed about how to do tip for it.
Even though you might not be starting to.
Yeah, that.
So as well as it could just sit there forever, it wasn't a problem, until we wanted to.
Well, and that's, I guess the notion that they're doing these cores that are twenty feet deep has more to do with the fulfilling of the phase one, phase two requirements for that stuff.
Hopefully most of you have studied.
Yes, so.
Second?
Second.
Go call.
Tom?
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
We need to make a final page for the application sound?
Yeah, that actually came together real well. They engineer in the urban conservation and this were off here and walked through that. They felt real good about it and recommended final payment of a thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars thirty-six.
Oh, should you approve?
Second. Well, second, go call.
Over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, we need to consider appointments for P and Z?
Yeah, so we have two seats on the planning, wanting that would be open, Nathan, that one would like to be reappointed. And we have two additional applications to consider. Don Outt and Jim Wallace, and I contacted them both about the meeting and said that we may have a meeting conflict tonight. Looking to, like you say, fill a few seats and we're pretty interested.
Um, well, my opinion is, you know, I think it's great that we have more applicants than we have vacancies. Nathan's done a good job and I think, I mean, you know, Jim Wallace probably a little better than I do, Don. And therefore, I think Jim's got a little more experience with some of the public entities, so I would make a motion to hire Jim Wallace for the vacant position. Reappoint Nathan for the other role.
Second?
Well, second.
Go call. Don? Thank you.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
There you go, more years, more money.
He's the same. Okay, we had KKIV here last week, they put the camera up and four hours later they took it back down and couldn't make a connection or something. They took it back. We let him win, so Jeff put a new hole in with the guys, put a new hole down today.
Today.
And we're supposed to be here Thursday to put it back up, so we'll work out for the bugs, so we should be live shortly after that and officially we need to lie first.
They took down a class five, which the higher the number, the smaller amount of hole. The biggest class I have for a thirty-five footer is class three. So that's what, and I look for the biggest one in the pile that we can get.
Doesn't look like a wind lane.
Uh, your place did get a little shake out in a good wind, but it should be a little better than what we had.
So do they really know what the problem was? And they had tested the camera before they brought it?
Yeah, I don't know.
They worked in Sioux City, they had a laptop, we spent hours up on top. We had, that was, I said words, I think, I forgot the word, static diarrhea. Anyway, after four hours, they decided we took it all back down and Cornbough was there, Aaron, and he took the bracket and it was really hard to mount it to the hole because it wasn't made for that.
We changed that bracket a little bit today with him. Aaron was there with us while we set the hole and he's got a little better, different setup, so should be better.
Took us twenty minutes to put it up and then another time to take it back down twice.
Yeah, I've been watching it all week.
And they appreciate your watching, I'm sure.
I watch it every day, it's great.
It's probably here nor there, but have you guys heard anything about the white pioneer? You know, cause they say the camp, since we upgraded the camp dome, they say it's really good. And then I heard people out of Dixieland were having trouble with white fire. And I don't, I just wondered.
That's all buried out there, so I, I don't know, I guess that's a question for Cornbough.
Yeah, I just wondered. Not people somebody who's having issues or something.
Anyway, with the KKIV camera, we have to figure out what percentage the city would participate with, talked about the city would contribute of the seventeen-hundred monthly, kick in five-hundred. Council would like to do that. We have four sponsors, that's what they want.
That year out?
It's a two-year contract.
I think it's, I think it's good publicity for us. When the person coming down just show us the building, we've never heard it like you, that's something.
I mean, I talk to people all over, you know, and I, I'll mention, I have like you on my shirt or something, they say, oh, I know where that is.
I think we should be a part of the city.
Five hundred, ten, fifty, five hundred, fifty.
Yes.
Second? Go call.
Over?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you see the administrator report?
All right.
Lucky lagoon?
Uh, yeah, just a little bit on the lagoon. Okay, well, let me give a little update on the lagoon.
There's a lot of crap in there. They were doing some digging today again and put another blocker in. I checked it yesterday, checked it last week, our little spot, little wet spot, and then Sunday I went back and checked it again and it had dropped a little bit. So they may have got it, I don't know, it's been dry and hot. The wet spotting is big as it used to be, but it could be because of it's been hot and dry. They did do another blocker, a little bit lower in cell number one on pipes. We'll have to see how that, if that stops it, but there's still a little trickle that comes out running these pipes. Hopefully maybe that'll take care of that.
Cause he put some more stuff.
Ben and I did, Ben and I, but.
But didn't you think that one wet spot out there, I thought Todd was trying to say that that was, that it was not a leak out of the burn? Isn't that what he was saying that day around there?
Yeah.
Cause he said something about the height of it?
Yeah, and he didn't think that it was a tile either, just because he don't think that it would come up to the surface.
After the lagoon had been in, or lowered. So could it be that that wet spot was, you know, kind of wet deep in really and that now it's just finally trying to dry out? And you're skeptical?
I'm skeptical on that, just because that, that spot should have been dried a long time ago. Cause that would have been lowered for quite a while. I'm more apt to say that it was a tile line.
So would we learn anything again if we test it for people?
It'll still have it in there, I mean, you'd have to dig it up a little bit. I talked to Scott, we're gonna make another hole somewhere else to see if that's been, come up there and then we can test it.
So where does the tile run that you think it might be coming from?
From the east side, between the two, well, run down the east side and run down around the south.
Okay.
And then over to a manhole and then down.
But clear away from the, from the lining, right?
From the what?
From the lining?
Yeah.
It's not close to.
No, it's out on the side of the berm and there's actually twelve of them. One's kind of halfway up and then the other one's down towards the bottom.
So we're gonna have another opportunity here when they start to fill the lagoon. Okay, we won't have effluent coming out of the Sager system for a while. Okay, that tile that he's talking about still drains into the effluent manhole. Okay, so you have that tile draining in and effluent always flowing through there too. We never have a chance to test the, that tile, the tile for it. Okay, well, we'll have that chance and we'll make sure that we get a test of that tile and we're not having effluent coming through.
Correct.
Two steps forward.
A couple other things for you, I didn't put that in there, just as an FYI, a lot of requests for no parking on Horseshoe Drive. And likely be that we would do no parking on what would be the inside, there'd just be no parking on the island side of Horseshoe Drive.
The island side?
Inside, inside.
The whole inside of Horseshoe, so no parking on Horseshoe Drive?
Yep. So you park it for your house, but you couldn't park it across there.
Right.
Just the complaint was, and there's more people that live up there now and of course, there are more people certainly come visit then on the weekends. And when we're a little busy at third and the weekends, if you had parked on both sides, it's just hard to get through.
Oh, I see what you're saying, both, I thought you meant both sides of the serp, of the, I don't know.
I think of it as inside and outside, so you could park on the outside but not on the inside.
I see what you're saying.
And.
I had just gave you.
I think when you consider from the corner of Lake Street up Fifth to at least the alley on one side, that was terrible last weekend trying to get back and forth to camp ground. People coming up and down at one lane and you had people parked on both sides of the road. Water carnival, we put temporary no parking on the one side, but I think we should make permanent for a short area at the corner. Where it's, where it's, right in front of Van Ever.
On Fifth Street?
Yes, one side or the other, just even just to the alley. I don't want to take away from, you know, speaking.
I don't want to take away from, you know, Speaker Park or Splashback, but just from that corner to the alley is terrible. You sat there, sat there just to turn, people trying to get in and out, and I was trying to get in and out, and...
So on this horseshoe, you know, I did refer this on to Police Department, have them take a look there, and Brandon was in general agreement that that would be a good place for him to park. And if the council's on board with this, we'd have an ordinance come to the, to the next council.
You have to still let it go, but let it come on.
You sure don't have to, I mean, if you want, if you want input.
Well, they need to know, I mean, you know, read about it.
Yeah, they did that, if they're, but to...
Try to let you?
Yeah, remember that? Remember that song?
Yeah, okay, well, although it's safe.
Okay, can do. Camp Crescent project, as far as paths and everything, the project is done, doing pretty good, growing some grass, we anticipate opening the sites for camping as of the weekend if you're in need. On the cabins, we're still awaiting contractor to get that done, and if you made a score on that.
Camp Brown was a little, took that off that project, made that off.
Just a couple other things for you, North West Iowa League meeting is the seventeenth, that's in La Margine, a session with regional state representatives, representatives in the senate, we've got RCPs and private keys, so that'd be interesting. And the League of Cities is having their annual conference in person in September, and it's like the fourteenth through sixteenth.
Fifteenth through seventeenth?
Fifteenth through seventeenth, of September.
Where's that?
Coral. Yeah, John, John was interested in one, and I would go, anybody interested?
I might, I might be. When we have...
Um, yeah, so registration opens, I asked this question of getting by, and you can register throughout the time.
Do you know what the workshops are on, or?
That's online.
It's online out there, so I'll take a look at them. Could we, could we get, just a couple issues that have come up, can we get some kind of a written update on usage, action?
Yeah, we'll get that.
At the next, you know, at the next twenty-five, thirty-eight, included in the packet. And then there is some, there is some question about drainage of the Crescent Park Drive. Do you think that's gonna, I mean, is it gonna be a problem, or?
I'm gonna go up there and kind of move, I looked at it at the end of the day, coming out of that one driveway, that's where the water's coming down off there, driveway right across the street.
Yeah.
I'm going to take and scoop a little dirt out behind the mailboxes and stuff, because it's that far above the driveway itself, I'm gonna try to move that a little bit. Icorn had a little bit of worry on how much I'm gonna take out in front of their yard. It's just enough to get, like John said, just kind of swell it down a little bit, try to get the water to run, instead of running across the road, but I don't think it might help a little bit, but, you know, coming right off that driveway is just...
There's no culvert or anything like that, is there?
What's that?
There's no culvert or anything like that one?
No, and we talked about that too, about maybe putting a beehive or something on that side, and then you got to put a culvert all the way down to the, down to the horseshoe to jump into that storm pilot.
Will that be an option, of course, to that?
An option, some of those utilities on that side. And there, that's, and some of the utilities there are not very deep, so I gotta be careful when I take a little bit of dirt out.
We look forward to seeing that happen.
I already talked about doing it tomorrow morning.
Yeah, just see how it goes, probably got there a while before you go to hotel.
Mm-hmm. No rain, too.
One other bit of, bit of good news is that I met with the contractor today on the dentist's office, and went through a few things with them, and it was, we're concrete a couple of weeks.
Great, write that down on KKIV, I found a meeting, I want to make sure I...
Well, I'm here to tell you, I drove uptown a week ago Saturday at seven-ten, and I had to wait, it's like, I mean, you know, the farmer's market is obviously doing really well, but Milton's was, you know, amazing, even I think all the stores were doing well. I don't know that I've seen that, I don't know if I've ever seen twenty-five years of that. So that was good news, I thought.
There you go.
Jeff, I want to thank you again for Saturday helping out, we lost power downtown again, and I've been using these great, big wires.
Now, that board that you helped me with today, that bringing up for that temporary deal, I'm kind of investigating a little bit on, and trying to do some kind of outlet on the back of maybe lifters, and a couple other spots, and making a long cord with a couple more of those boards, just, I mean, I'll bring it to you guys when I kind of get a little more info on that, but I'd like to have them, just so we got it for that event, because that event's just gonna get bigger, I think.
Sixteen hundred glasses?
It's huge, and, and I'll just put a thing out there, anybody would, know anybody that would step up to the plate and volunteer, we are really struggling to get volunteers, and people that could help aren't helping, and it's been a nightmare for those coordinators. Not just Siphon Sample, but the concert and cleaning up after those two events, but then when you do get people to help come clean up, then most of them are gone, you know, they'll come work a shift, you know, which is great, but we also need people, you know, especially strong people that can load trailers, and move tables, and tents.
I walked down to the concert with my daughter and my future son along, and I no longer got there, I got a call and had transformer go down in the campground, so we worked until nine-thirty that night, so, and I appreciate Dean for helping me out.
Right, good job.
He helped carry some of the heavy wire, too.
Yeah, definitely.
And it was hot and heavy. Thanks for everything you guys do like this.
Exactly.
It could have disappeared if we wouldn't have known. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've saw some people that I've never been to I met before, and they were just blown away, because they've been to a lot of big camps, and they get one here, things like that, and they're definitely coming back, so good job, everybody, all. And the vendors, all the vendors that I, you know, because we try to loop back through, you know, and Jennifer's got that organized real well, and pick-up cards, and, you know, give them the date for next year, and, you know, usually you'll have a few that'll say, well, I didn't really do very good today or whatever, but they were all just, they've done well, we're pleased with their sales, so...
I'm not gonna be on call next year.
You just like that, don't you?
I, I did that event, and Justin's on call for Water Carnival.
We are.
Yes, yeah, we're on call together.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Second? Being adjourned, thanks everyone. We've got some work to finish.